Good evening. I'm calling to order a meeting of the Wilsonville City Council on Monday, March 21st at 7:03 PM. We are going to start with the roll call. If the city recorder would please call the roll.
Councilor Lindell?
Here.
Councilor what?
Did you answer?
Sorry, I was muted. I was muted all. I didn't hear anything. Sorry.
Oh, we just, they called your name.
Oh, I am oblivious. I'm so sorry. Yes, I'm here if we're doing roll call. Sorry, my computer was all muted up.
Council President Ockerbaum?
Here.
Council Leehan?
Here.
Julie Fitzgerald?
Here. And now will the city manager lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the council president Ockerbaum provide a motion to approve the amended agenda as amended?
Yes, I move to approve the agenda amended and amended again.
Second?
I'll second.
I'll just add that what we've done is we've added an item onto the communications section to hear about the Wilsonville Ready Plan. So all in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. We are using our new protocols to do things a little differently, still meeting remotely. And tonight was the time we had planned to do the State of the City address. And we had recorded it earlier. Show some of our recent successes, so we'll go ahead and show that. And I want to thank Councilor Leehan for participating and also the library's Brad Clark for his videography skills.
On the happy occasion of Wilsonville Library's 40th anniversary, this felt like the perfect venue from which to deliver my 2022 State of the City virtual address. Good libraries function as the heartbeat of great communities, and that's certainly true in Wilsonville. Our library welcomes everyone, and it's always adapting and evolving to meet the community's changing needs. In these respects, a good library is a microcosm of a great community. There are few people more appropriate than my fellow counselor Charlotte Leehan to discuss the library's significance to Wilsonville.
Library has been an important part of the community even before it was in this building and has really been almost overwhelmed by its success.
Charlotte is one of Wilsonville's foremost historians, and this is her final year on our city council. I want to take this opportunity to recognize Charlotte's 26 distinguished years in service to Wilsonville, including a 12-year stint as the city's mayor from 1997 through 2008. Charlotte's sound judgment, leadership, and steadfast protection of our natural resources have made her one of the single greatest contributors to Wilsonville's reputation as a wonderful place in which to live or work.
I've been fortunate to have worked many years with excellent staff at the city of Wilsonville that has always worked like a team. And likewise, the city councilors and mayors I've worked with have really been very collaborative. Three of the most important accomplishments in my time with the city of Wilsonville that I am proudest of are the Wilsonville Track, which is Graham Oaks, citing the prison appropriately so that we could have Villebois. And the third is the Wilsonville Water Treatment Plant, without which we couldn't have done much of anything because we didn't have water. Not being in elected office will give me more time to participate in the other things, which a lot of times are really very fun. So I look forward to the next chapter.
Councilor Leehan is one of many passionate, engaged residents who have helped guide Wilsonville's course. Passionate public involvement is one big reason why Wilsonville has long been a desirable community. I'm glad and proud that so many community members are engaged and involved in how our city functions. In the past year, we have worked to establish three new boards. The Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is working on strategies to make Wilsonville a more inclusive home. The Kitchikata Sister City Committee is further strengthening our valuable cultural exchange. And soon, our Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission will begin to guide our work to provide a more vibrant arts and culture scene in Wilsonville. Wilsonville puts people first. We prioritized public safety during a relentless siege of crises that has included nearby wildfires, an ice storm that left many residents without power for a week or more, and of course, the ongoing pandemic.
I think putting people first in a local government context, what it means to me is that everything we do, whether it's our annual budget, the programs and services we deliver, or the quality of the built environment, we begin with the end in mind, which is the end is the people that live here and operate a business here.
Thanks to Brian Cosgrove and the city staff for their empathetic leadership. We've been through a lot together. This year, we will introduce Wilsonville Ready, an emergency management awareness plan that improves our collective resilience so we're better prepared for future disasters. We want everyone two weeks ready. To aid our recovery from the pandemic, the city will begin allocating more than $5 million it received in federal American Rescue Plan Act funding. This provides an opportunity to do a lot for our community, providing additional support for social services program through Wilsonville Community Sharing. And we're going to be funding a full-time behavioral health specialist to join the Wilsonville Police Department. A thriving business climate critically supports Wilsonville's financial health. New industrial and commercial development bolsters the tax base, supports new infrastructure, and brings family wage jobs closer to home. Last year's establishment of the Wilsonville Investment Now, or WIN, program was designed to incentivize new industrial development. The program yielded immediate dividends, luring Twist Bioscience to Wilsonville with a $70 million redevelopment at the Xerox campus that will bring hundreds of jobs.
My job is really to create an environment in Wilsonville in which businesses want to be and continue to be, and where developers want to invest their capital and grow the local tax base.
Buildout has begun in the Coffee Creek Industrial Area, supporting the city's sustainable, long-term industrial growth. Successful economic development supports our work to maintain and build the city's infrastructure. Several of these projects support our number-one goal, increasing mobility for every mode of transport. The Fifth to Kinsman Project is on schedule in Old Town. Road improvements are complete on Garden Acres Road. Design is now complete for a pedestrian bridge to be built over the I-5 Divide. At the same time, we're also supporting sustainable growth by building additional water intake capacity, investing in electric buses, and constructing a new public works facility. We're being careful to align this infrastructure development with sustainable financing sources to remain fiscally responsible.
I think for the last 25 years, we've, the city's had three mayors, Tim Knapp, Charlotte Leehan, and Julie Fitzgerald. And I think the one thing that probably more than anything that unifies them in terms of how they've operated is that they both, or they all three, deeply care about the community.
We're proud of Wilsonville's record of delivering at a high value for our taxpayers. That reputation is hard-earned. Your city councilors proudly serve on several regional boards and committees. We're successfully leveraging partnerships with other public agencies and elected officials to support new amenities and legislation on your behalf. In partnership with the city of Sherwood, we're building a fiber-optic cable network to support new technologies. With Tuolatin Valley Fire and Rescue, we established a new fire station in Charbonneau to better serve residents south of the river. We're fighting diligently to represent your interests with regard to the Aurora Airport. And most critically, we continue to work with ODOT and our state legislators to advance the very essential construction of a higher-capacity, earthquake-resistant Boone Bridge. Improving mobility for all modes of transportation is one way we're working on behalf of all residents. Another part of our work is to expand homeownership to a broader cross-section of individuals and families. Expanding homeownership is a council goal that ensures that people with a wide variety of interests in size, type, and price of home can live in Wilsonville. With the Equitable Housing Strategic Plan and the Middle Housing Project, we're pursuing more inclusive strategies that create opportunity for first-time homebuyers and others who want to make Wilsonville their home. We're further removing barriers by being one of the few cities that offers free transit service to residents. And we're pursuing housing near transit in a form called Transit-Oriented Development that will further increase options for residents. And our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee is working to develop a strategy to help us view programs and policies through the lens of equity. Our plan to develop Frog Pond neighborhoods on the city's east side will be informed by our Middle Housing Plan. Frog Pond is a new opportunity to build on our history of thoughtful, cohesive planning. Historically, Wilsonville's approach has yielded attractive, desirable neighborhoods, neighborhoods that are informed by community input, that are supported by first-class schools, and high-quality parks and recreational amenities that contribute to a high quality of life and provide value for your tax dollars. There are so many things that make Wilsonville a great place to live, work, and play.
We love all the parks, the walking trails. Take our dogs to the dog park every day, take the kids to the playgrounds.
Been a part of their story time since she is like six months old. It's wonderful.
I like the sports. They have a lot of rec teams that my kids participate in.
Just the safety of the town where we walk down not feeling we're going to be in danger of anything.
Love that it seems like a lot of people stick around, so there's a really big sense of community.
And we would appreciate the city work to make all of this happen.
For those reasons and many more, our community is special. It's my honor to work on behalf of all of you to grow and maintain our wonderful city. We look forward to completing the goals we've set and to continue to listen and to engage directly with as many of you as possible to ensure that our work is always supporting the community's greatest needs. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you to Bill Evans for putting that together. And Charlotte for taking time to participate as well. So this brings us to a couple of other items on mayor's business. I wanted to first talk about the, our city attorney, Barbara Jacobson, announced her retirement last fall, and so we embarked on a plan to recruit her replacement. Barbara plans to retire at the end of the month after serving 10 years as our city legal counsel. And you heard about many of the things Barbara's been working on in that video, and they go back way before that. So she's had a great input in our city's success, and we just can't overstate her wonderful contributions to where we are today. So we will talk a little bit more about that at the end of the meeting. While I will again congratulate Barbara. I wanted to also say that in our work to, we've been interviewing candidates for the city attorney. We have come up with a top recommended candidate, and we're now ready to move to the next phase. And I would like to ask Council President Ockerbaum to make a motion to that regard, please.
Thank you. I move that Amanda Guilehinman be appointed as the Wilsonville City Attorney, subject to final employment agreement approval set for April 4th, 2022. We've got our next council meeting with a work start date to be determined.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Well, I will add that we were honored to have some excellent candidates, and we spent many, many hours learning about them and interviewing them and are very grateful for the great collection of candidates that we had. And thank everyone for your participation. So all in favor, is there any other discussion seeing that? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes five zero. Thank you. One item I have on the mayor's business is a little unusual. It's the Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission liaison. We need a council liaison for this commission. And I have written to people about this several weeks ago, and none of the council members contacted me about it. And so I would like to serve as a liaison. I have a great passion for that field and would like to take the first run at going to those meetings and seeing how it gets started. And so I would ask for a nomination and vote to allow me to embark on that, please.
Go ahead, Council Lindell. Your Honor, I move that Mayor Fitzgerald be appointed to serve as the council liaison to the new Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. No, you can second.
And under discussion, I didn't say this, but can we amend the motion to stay for one year? We probably need a timeframe.
I'll accept that amendment, yes.
The second, okay? Thank you.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Our next city council meeting is April 4th, Monday, April 4th. I wanted to, you know, again, I'm sure all of us are equally moved 24 hours a day about the conflict in Ukraine, and all of the people are so terribly affected by that. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I feel so much pain for that, for everyone involved in that, and hope for a resolution soon. Couple of meetings I wanted to report on. Last Friday, the mayor of the city of Aurora, Brian Asher, and I met with Councilor Leehan and also a representative of the governor's office, Amira Streeter. And she served as Governor Kate Brown's Climate, Energy, and Transportation Advisor. And the topic of the discussion was the letter that we had sent to the governor last December about the state of affairs and the long struggle to be equitably represented and make sure that the Aurora State Airport is following the land use laws. And you've read many things about this in the media. The Oregon Supreme Court recently upheld the position. So this meeting was within response to that letter and the number of concerns we have. And I'm just going to note some of them. The concerns include the increasing noise and air pollution at the Aurora Airport that negatively impact residents' lives, quality of life, the lack of coordinated intergovernmental land use and transportation planning for the airport area that is resulting in increased surface transportation impacts on our county roads and I-5 and the Boone Bridge without any mitigation funding source. And that lack of coordinated intergovernmental planning is one of our biggest issues. We are concerned about the urban-level development that is occurring at the airport in prime exclusive farmland that is detrimental to the agricultural industry in that area, which is one of the biggest trade sectors in our entire state. A new Aurora State Airport master planning process that is now underway, they have formed a planning advisory committee, which we've spoken before. We brought this to the attention of the governor also and feel that the planning advisory committee is loaded with members who have airport interests, with a minority of citizens and nearby residents on that panel. Miss Streeter appeared to understand our city's concerns about the aviation department and the airport master planning process, and she asked to meet with us again next month. Given the many problems that we've had over the past 10 years with the aviation department and with the governor-appointed aviation board, the cities of Aurora and Wilsonville are really looking for some strong cooperation from the state of Oregon. It's been a contentious time. We would like to solve these things in a collaborative process, but that has not been possible. We do have a race for governor coming, and I think the city is going to have to work with others to educate candidates about the issue. And I wanted to close with the most recent activity. Just last week, there was more to deal with. And because the Oregon Department of Aviation, as you can read in the articles about the Supreme Court rule at Oregon Supreme Court, because the Oregon Department of Aviation could not produce the 2011 master plan as they were ordered to do by the Oregon Court of Appeals, it was the only plan that the ODA claims was adopted. Well, just last week, the airport interest group is asking that the Oregon Department of Aviation be allowed to re-adopt a 2012 master plan, which they have all along tried to pass off as the same as the 2011 plan. But as the record reflects and the Court of Appeals held, that plan was never adopted, and there were no public hearings, meetings, or findings held. So our contention is that it's not reasonable to re-adopt a plan that was never adopted to begin with. That doesn't work for others, and it shouldn't work for a state agency. The last properly adopted master plan was in 1999, and that is the master plan that this new, currently undergoing master plan should be built off of. We will keep you posted. Last week, the city of Wilsonville hosted a town hall for our state representative Courtney Neron, who represents House District 26. She was reporting on the 2022 legislative short session. She discussed quite a bit of legislation that was passed during that session. One of note is something of statewide and local significance, and that is housing. Representative Neron helped to secure $1.9 million for the proposed transit-oriented affordable housing development that was mentioned in the video we just watched at the Wilsonville Transit Center. So these funds will be incredibly helpful in helping to fill the gap in the financing plan for that affordable housing development. Representative Neron is scheduled to present her 2022 legislative session report in person at the next city council meeting on April 4th. I've gone to a whole host of meetings lately, and I will spare you from listing them because you've heard them before. But we're continuing to work on lots of issues, including transportation. I think you'll hear about some of them from the other councilors. And again, I wanted to just take a moment to recognize that this is our last meeting with Barbara Jacobson as our city attorney, I believe. And she has just done an incredible job over 10 years. We're looking forward to celebrating that with her and thank her for all of the work she's done to help make our city what it is today. We are planning to have our next city council meeting in person on April 4th. That brings us now to the communications section of our agenda. And we'll start with a presentation by staff, Mr. Mundalvo, about the Wilsonville Ready Program.
Take it away. You're trying to share your, oh.
There you go. Good evening, and your and council members. Delora Kerber, Public Works Director, here with Operations Manager Martin Montavo. And tonight, we are here to bring you an update on work on council goal number six, which is to engage the community to support emergency preparedness and resiliency. So tonight, we'll talk about how we're building a more resilient community through this emergency preparedness campaign. So two of the sub-goals for council goal number six has to do with working with our regional emergency preparedness partners. And the other one is connecting with the community. And to move along both of those, we put out a, you can do the next page. We did a program kickoff where we put out a community emergency preparedness survey. So we did an online survey back in December of 2021. I believe we actually extended it probably into January just to make sure that we got a lot of respondents, of which we did get 155 people completing the survey. It was good to know that at least 13% of the respondents were from apartment communities. So we got a nice broad section of the community members to respond to the survey. 92% of those who responded were currently living in Wilsonville. In fact, 48% of those who responded had lived in the city anywhere from three to 10 years, and another 21% of them had lived in the city 11 to 20 years. So we had a nice cross-section of people, whether they were new to the city or had been here a very long time. Of those respondents, about 60% of them worked elsewhere than in the city itself. So we had promoted it through the Boone's Ferry Messenger on social media, through the city website. What we found from the respondents was that people, more than 9% of the people who responded were very, very interested in learning more about how they could be better prepared for an emergency. And their focus is very local, local in the concept of wanting to get information from the city of Wilsonville and Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. Those were the top two sources that people were wanting to get information from and how they could better be prepared. So, well, some of the numbers that we had is you had over 50% wanting to be somewhat more prepared, 40% wanting to be a lot more prepared, and 8% said that they thought they were prepared enough. The survey asked them how you were prepared, and there was a multitude of responses that they could have. But clearly, people were very interested in wanting to be more prepared. And their topics of interest, as you can see from the chart, were, every one of them, except for flooding, were over 50% of being very concerned. And so we had not only the ice storm earthquakes, but there were snowstorms, cybersecurity, household fire, drought, fireworks. These are all the different things. So a multitude of different disasters is what concerned them. So one of the things that kept coming back and back again is that time was the biggest barrier, just the lack of ability. And so then their respondents said that they were interested in finding easy ways to be able to get better prepared, because some of them felt that there was just too much information out there, and they were looking for some way to get it consolidated. So you basically have a one-stop shop that you could do it. So finding, using checklists, finding all the resources in one place were top two responses of what they were interested in doing. Some of the specific comments that we had gotten, as you can see on the screen, I won't read them to you, I'll let you read them. But it's some how-to knowledge of how you can deal with your utilities. Where do I go? How do I get there? Recognizing that our neighbors need to be prepared, so how could we get information, get that done? You know, could you give me the resources that I need instead? You know, could you give me the resources that I need instead of having to go figure it out all by myself? And again, coming up with, with, um, a one-stop shopping. So using the information that we received from the survey is how we started to develop our education campaign for emergency readiness. And then also, we'd asked the respondents about, um, we had a couple different choices of how might we want to brand this preparation, uh, program? And then based on their response, over 50% of them had chosen Wilsonville Ready. And at this, I'm going to turn it over to Martin to take it away.
Hi, uh, it's Martin Montalvo, Public Works Operations Manager. So I'm going to give you just a kind of rundown of the education campaign we're calling Wilsonville Ready that we'll be rolling out over the next 12 months. So as Delora already mentioned, it's based on our survey findings. We tried to get as informed as possible and tailor the education program on what the community said that they wanted. Um, it's a community program, so we're targeting both the individual, the household, and business preparedness, and each of the months will cover various topics to address those three avenues. What we're trying to do with this program is become a simple and centralized resource that's Wilsonville-centric. So as Delora mentioned earlier, the most trusted sources was local, 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 starting TVFNR number one, Wilsonville number two, local county emergency managers, police departments three and four, and FEMA was dead last. We want to try and keep this as local and pertinent to our community as possible. So our program, and we'll go over our work plan for you in a little bit, is we've come up with seasonal themes that cover the, uh, various seasons of the year and the kind of disasters and emergencies that you should be preparing for, for that time of the year. And then each month has a specific preparedness topic that we'll try and drill down a little bit more in depth for each of those monthly topics to let you take small bites of the apple, um, so that way you try and inhale the apple all one time, you choke on it, small bites, you'll be able to take it down. And then the other thing is leverage partnerships and existing resources with all of our regional partners, including TVFNR, Clackamas and Washington County Emergency Managements, our own police department, and other agencies. So as I mentioned earlier, we're reaching out to our partners, and one of the things that, um, assuming that you find the proposal, you know, that you want to proceed with this, we're going to be sending out a letter to all of our partners officially asking for their participation in the Wilsonville Ready Program. We've had preliminary discussions with all of these groups, and they're all excited to see this program roll out. The partnership letter will allow us to ask for assistance in terms of, can you help us staff a community event? Would you be willing to do a webinar for our community members? Can we use your logo on some of the publications on our webpage that we're getting ready to publish out for our community members? These are the partners that we're looking at, that we've touched base with almost all of these to date, and assuming, uh, this meets your approval tomorrow, we'll be sending out the partnership letter. So this is the work plan. As you can see, we've kind of broken it up into various themes. So we're kicking off in April, and our, uh, April, our spring theme is spring cleaning. So emergency spring cleaning. The April Boone's Ferry Messenger is going to have an article regarding home preparedness and things that, uh, three specific tasks homeowners can do to become home-prepared. May is extreme wildfire month, June is prepare for your pets. I'll go through just the seasonal themes, but the monthly topics are there for you to take a look at. So summer theme, we're going to be focusing on utilities and general preparedness. Fall is earthquake and winter preparedness to coincide with the great shake that we have in October. And then January, um, family and business preparedness, um, with topics regarding family emergency preparedness, business preparedness, and transportation routes. So for each of the months, we have several work tasks that we've kind of outlined for us. So the first thing is doing website updates, leveraging information that's already out there, that our partners can give us access to. And so we're not reinventing the wheel. It really takes advantage of staff time and leverages work that other people have already compiled and put together. We're just trying to consolidate it into a central resource. BFM articles, uh, we're going to try and come up with a checklist for each of the monthly topics of things that homeowners, business owners, family members can do on, for each of the topics in each respective month. Where possible, publish a video, or either construct a video, at which point we may ask some of the council members to help us with preparing some educational videos for our community members, or we'll leverage existing videos that some of our partners may already have. A ready resource kit is something that we refer to as a tool that one of our partners already has created, and they'll give us permission to utilize it and publish it on our webpage. So for instance, this month, we have a ready resource kit on how to create a home evacuation plan from TVFNR. That's already on our webpage. And then lastly, we're going to plan some community events and exercises. So one of the events that we're planning for is a fall preparedness fair, um, which will coincide with Preparedness Month in next September. We have two emergency exercises that we're planning for the year, and I'll give you some more information on that regard. So our monthly topics, so one of the things we want to try and do with the monthly topics is have homeowners, uh, family members realize that emergencies happen more than often than you think, and you have to start planning now. So we're going to encourage them to make a plan and to get their kit together. So we're going to give instructions on how to prepare your emergency kits for your homes for a three-day, a seven-day, or a 14-day emergency kit, depending on what your particular prerogative is. We're going to remind them to include water. It's one of our most valuable resources and one of the things that's most often left out in an emergency preparedness kit. We're going to remind them to include your pets. They are part of your family. And lastly, get your kids involved. It's a family activity, and preparedness starts at the household. We have our WilsonvilleReady.com webpage, so this is live now. You can type this in the URL, and it will bring you over to our Wilsonville Ready webpage. We're trying to make this a one-stop resource. Each month, the page will be updated with that monthly topic, um, but then all of the archive pages will simply be put into the bottom as a clickable link that you can go to a previous topic. And then we're working right now with co-branding. This area here is saved for all of our partners to put their logos, and what we intend to do is to make them hot links that will get them to each of the respective agency's own emergency management resources. So we might have a topic regarding, um, utilities and, and water safety, and the Regional Water Providers Consortium is the ready resource for the region, so we're going to get them to the right place at the right time. Uh, we already are working on our education outreach, so Greg Leo and staff are working with community members and community groups to begin some, um, community discussions, education, uh, activities. We're meeting with Rotary Club, American Legion, uh, we're reaching out to Charbonneau. We intend to reach out to HOAs that like to have, uh, Greg or staff come and do a community presentation, and other community groups that are interested are welcome to contact us through the Wilsonville Ready webpage and make arrangements. I'd already mentioned the community preparedness fair that we have in the fall of 2022. And then lastly, we are going to do some Animoto videos, which are, um, they're really cool little innovative videos where we can incorporate a message, um, and we're going to ask a few of you to possibly help with narrating, um, those videos as we get further into them. So we've got some engagement exercises. So one of the things that the survey provided for us is some input onto the things people want to learn about, how to become better prepared. So our first engagement exercise, which will begin next month, is the Go Bag Challenge. And we're going to discuss on a monthly, uh, little checklist of things that homeowners, family members, businesses can do on preparing your own individual go-bag. We'll provide a few steps each month, and then at the end of the challenge, participants are going to, um, be eligible to receive one of our Wilsonville Ready branded, um, phone chargers. So if you recall during the ice storm, this was one of the items that we received, several calls from residents that were out of power and saying, "I'm losing, uh, power," or "I'm losing my cellphone capacity. Can you do anything to bring me, uh, something to charge my phone?" And city staff wound up buying a whole bunch of these and bringing them down to our Charbonneau residents to try and help with keeping their phones up and running. So you can prepare your go-bag, work on your side of the preparedness. The top, uh, Rapha, or, well, the top 100 people that reply will get one of these Wilsonville Ready branded phone chargers. The next exercise that we're going to do is, uh, the emergency water storage exercise. It's for the community members, but it's also going to, um, count as the city's mandatory emergency management exercise that we have to do annually. So we do this as part of our emergency response plan. Frankly, the last two years, we haven't had to do it because we've had a real live emergency each year that counted towards it. So knock on wood, I'm hoping we only get to do this one this year. Um, this exercise was done by EWEB, that's the Eugene Water and Utility Board, a few years ago, and I've always wanted to do one of these in my community. Uh, what we do is, we have community members sign up through the utility billing department. They're able to request one of these three-gallon water bottles that has emergency messaging labeled across the side on how to store and sanitize stored water in the event of a utility outage. And then for the city, it serves as a point-of-distribution exercise, which is an acknowledged, FEMA exercise, on how you would distribute resources. The intent was always, oh, how do you distribute emergency food in the event of a disruption? But water also counts. So we'll take advantage of this with our, uh, city staff, EOC, and plan a point-of-distribution exercise. And then because it's a utility related emergency, we'll be coordinating with our regional partners of the Water Providers Consortium. That's our presentation. We'll be happy to take any questions that you have.
Councilwoman West.
Thank you, your honor. Um, we got a really thoughtful email earlier this month from, um, a neighbor or citizen that's in, um, the Systems Academy. Yeah, he seemed, this is something he seemed to be passionate about, and I kind of want to, I think he brings up a couple of good questions, and it's really applicable to your presentation. And one of them was, um, the CERT program out of Portland, um, and I know that he thought about the question of whether or not we should have an FTE designated staff to really, like, get real bust with our emergency preparedness. Um, and I didn't know anything about that program or why Portland does it and not other cities do it. And Delora, you would know, I, I, I'm guessing on that specific program, um, and, and if it is even applicable. And do we have a system where people can really volunteer and get involved to help us coordinate various communities that are in little silos and their own little HOAs throughout Wilsonville to see if we can, um, help our community be, um, more prepared?
Probably CERT.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, I think you might be referring to, uh, CERT, uh, Citizen Emergency Response Teams.
That is, yes.
Okay. Um, so we do not currently have that, nor do we have any plans as part of this program. The interesting thing about a CERT is it really needs to be built from the ground up. So it needs to be neighborhood-based. The most successful CERT programs are a HOA or a small community, do all the, the training and preparation themselves. And so it's not really a city-driven program, it's more of a neighborhood-driven program to be the most successful.
Okay, and Councilwoman Leehan.
Yes, a couple of questions. Uh, I didn't see that, anything on there on, um, uh, on a cyber emergency. But as occurred in the ice storm, the, um, communication was what got people panicked right away. And, um, and, so it seems like part of our planning as a community has to be about a cyber attack of some sort or otherwise, um, when our, um, increasingly seems like fragile communication system is not working, uh, to have alternatives. And as much as the battery packs are wonderful, um, to, to have an emergency battery pack for your phone, that darn car battery will charge up, you know, a bajillion phones without even turning on your car. But people don't know how to do this, and so there, there's no discussion about that. And so people think they've got to run their car in the garage in order to charge up their phone. And it's, you know, so it's partly just not knowing, how do I keep a ta, uh, uh, you know, connected? How do I keep connected, uh, in an emergency, no matter what the emergency is? Um, and, and of course, with the world situation right now, that we're, we're a very high-tech communication sort of thing. Um, I noticed with the Ukraine situation, there, every town there, even way before this, uh, war, they have sirens. Do we have sirens? This question has been asked of me. Uh, we used to, we used to have one because we had a volunteer fire department, and there was a siren down there next to Lowry's, where the old fire department was. There was a siren that would go off, and you would know there was an emergency. I guess we threw them all away. I don't know what we did with them. I, I haven't heard of them. Um, but it's a, it's a question if you're, are we relying on very high-tech communications or do we have a backup that is low-tech? And then my second, uh, piece on here I didn't see that much on is about heat emergencies, because goodness knows, we killed a lot more people in the heat than we ever did in the cold. And, um, and I think the heat emergencies are something that we have done a very poor job, we, the whole community, in, in explaining to people how they can stay safe in the heat. It isn't just air conditioning. Um, there are many other things you can do to keep your body and your body core cool, like with gel packs that you put around your neck, or other strategies that will keep people safe in the heat, because they're, they're very vulnerable, because they don't feel endangered until it's too late. The cold will drive you into somewhere warm because you're uncomfortable right away. But the heat, people are thinking they can just sit there and, and, uh, fan themselves or something, and they're not doing what they need to keep their core cool until it's too late. And, and, I mean, that heat wave, we lost, Oregon lost 60 people or something in the heat. So, um, we need to, we need to have a better strategy than just go to the library when it gets hot, because people won't get up and do that. So anyway, I just wanted to add heat to the list, as well as the, the overarching piece about communication.
So Councilwoman Leehan, let me share with you guys our work plan again for this year. So you had brought up communications. Um, that's actually our, our December, uh, topic. Um, it's communications and emergency and staying informed. We'll cover various avenues from low-tech to high-tech during that monthly topic. You had also brought up.
Do we have sirens?
Do we have sirens? Not that I'm aware of, no.
No.
I mean, they do at the coast because of the tsunami.
Yep.
Business. They have sirens at the coast, and we used to have them here, but I don't know what they, what happened there.
We can dig into it further, but we do intend to cover emergency communications as, as a general topic, and again, we'll try and get down as, as low-tech and as high-tech as, as all the options that are out there. And we do have extreme heat and wildfire. It's actually the May topic. Um, as we mentioned, we tried to put the topics as where they were seasonally relative, and we'll be working with TVFNR to, um, try and hit both those issues in May, when we felt it was probably the most appropriate, try and try and hit that, that topic.
Yeah. I just have rarely seen heat emergencies, uh, covered from a personal protection thing other than go to somewhere with air conditioning. That, that's pretty much all I've ever seen.
Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Lindell.
Thank you. What a great plan, and, um, you know, a great approach to getting people, getting our citizens, I think, um, you know, at, at that, at that home level and community level, prepared. I, I applaud you. I think it's really great. One of the things I wondered about is, um, is, uh, in my, I, I did the, the ICES, the, um, NIMs training, and, um, there was an emphasis on a regional emergency organization. Um, and I am not so concerned about the larger region, but I know that as, um, we were doing our work in our community, we were connecting with our local law enforcement, um, the fire... the fire emergency response folks, and had an organizational model set up depending on what happened. So for instance, if we had, let's say, a gas leak with a major explosion and gas, that there would be an emergency response plan already in place for how all of our agencies within our community would work. You know, who would be the incident, who would be the incident command? Where would the command be set up? You know, who would be in charge of information, da-da-da-da? You know, all of those pieces. And I was wondering if we have that? Do we have that as a sophisticated plan?
So we do. All the cities and counties in the state are mandated to have an emergency response plan. So we have a volumous emergency response plan that it's written in what we call an all hazards format. So it's got individual chapters that kind of try and tackle all of the big topics. But the intent is really that you can cut and paste this to any type of hazard. So for instance, the ice storm. When we started putting together all of the actions that the city took in response to the ice storm, we didn't wing it. There was an actual plan that walked us step by step through that. Our EOC, working with the city manager, working with our elected officials, would put the plan into action, but it was already, the playbook was there. So we have that. And it's actually not this fiscal year, but the next fiscal year, Delora and I will be coming back to you guys, asking for some funds to do our update. So the counties take the lead. The municipalities are supposed to follow up shortly after the county updates theirs and make sure that we've kind of dovetailed those documents together. So Clackamas County is finishing theirs. Washington County is also updating theirs. So we intend to come back next fiscal year to update ours to dovetail with the two other jurisdictions.
Great, thank you.
Councilor President, Akaroff? Thank you. And thank you so much for this presentation. I think I'm so glad that we're doing this. I think that, you know, the response from the survey that you've already put out, you know, underscores the appetite for it within the community. So I'm very glad that this work is happening. And I might anticipate that as we get these monthly units that we kind of work through as a community, that the interest will only increase. And, you know, Councilor West referred to communication or comment, you know, that we've already received from, from the community on that. And I would imagine that we may have more questions that come up from community members in looking at how they can get involved and bring their HOAs into this. You know, as I think you mentioned, that the staff or somebody could come to HOAs to help do some training and really take advantage of the captive audience that I think we have now and will only increase as this momentum goes. The one point, and I apologize if you spoke about it, but I just want to make sure that it's in there and that we're thinking about this or that it's wrapped into the plan, is our employers and our large employers. Because it occurs to me that the Boon Fairy Messenger and perhaps our city website are things that are frequented by residents of the city. But of course, we have many people that are in Wilsonville that would be affected by a large event happening in Wilsonville that maybe aren't as plugged into the Boon Fairy Messenger and some of those communication pieces. And I want to make sure that they're also included in the planning and in the preparation. And if there's ways that we can work with some of the large employers in the city to facilitate that, you know, perhaps some of the planning that they have already happening within their companies, that would be a beneficial thing for all of us. Because our community does fluctuate with our workforce, too, of course.
Okay.
So just to answer your question, so just, when did we have it? February is business preparedness. And we do have an activity that actually Delora put into place several years ago here at the city of Wilsonville that we did for our own staff, where we have a business preparedness plan. It's basically a flip book that employers can share with their employees on what individual businesses do in the event of disruption, how they communicate with their employees, how to communicate internally, externally with their customers and kind of ready up their business plan. So that's something that we are pushing out for that particular month.
Thank you, everyone. It sounds like you've really got it covered. The council's giving you a lot of great questions. And I had another thought, but I bet it's on one of your months that I missed it. Do you have a way of also collaborating coordinated in terms of sharing messages and news with places of worship and other gathering places that, even like, there's a, there's a group of people who are, there's an adult soccer league, for example. So are there ways to get the people through those different convening methods with some of this?
Potentially. I think that's something that we need to look into is how we can reach out to the larger businesses, those be a little easier, but figure out what other groups are out there that we could share with them, what it is the city is doing so that they know the resources are available for their use.
And they could just spread it through those other networks. Well, thank you very much. And we'll look forward to seeing this. We'll see you at the various events, I think. I bet you'll have a lot of participation by the council. So thank you, Ms. Kerber, Ms. Montalvo, Mr. Montalvo. That will bring us to our next presentation about Oregon Institute of Technology. And I would like to welcome the president of OIT, who's going to present to us today, Dr. Nagi Naganathan. Please correct me on my pronunciation, doctor.
Well, you did very well. Good evening, everyone. I am Nagi Naganathan. I serve as president of Oregon Tech, Oregon Institute of Technology. I've been the president for the last five years. Before that, I was in Ohio for 31 years. And I've fallen in love with Oregon. And certainly, one of our campuses is here in Wilsonville. And today, I'm going to talk about Oregon Tech as a whole. I also want to recognize my colleague, Kelsey McCully, who's here with me. Kelsey is our assistant director of government relations. Let me start my PowerPoint presentation. I'm going to share it here. Can they all see my screen okay? Okay. Well, thank you for the invitation to be here with you. I wish I could be there in person. We are all happy that we will be doing more things in person very shortly. Oregon Tech, however, has been doing many of our classes. We have been hosting them in person, both in Clamott Falls, which is our main campus, as well as in Wilsonville. Even through the pandemic, some of our programs were being held in person. Oregon Tech is going to be completing 75 years. We are going to celebrate our 75th anniversary next year. We have been in Wilsonville only for about 10 years now. We came to Wilsonville in 2012. It's very hard to talk about the university in 10 minutes. So I am going to kind of quickly go through some of the highlights. And I want to do another important thing now, which is to invite all of you. We would love to host you on campus one day so that you can get to know more about the university and our staff and our students and what are some of the opportunities we can do in partnership with the city and with all of you. So let me quickly go through some of the slides. You are welcome to ask me any questions as we go through the presentation. But I know we also have very limited time here today. I will start with one of the big things that happened last year. Oregon Tech, Oregon Institute of Technology, was recognized officially. We were designated as Oregon's Polytechnic University. We are one of seven public universities in the state of Oregon. And this is bipartisan support in both chambers. And Governor signed HP 2472A into law in June 2021. This is in recognition of our unique mission and education and innovation approach. And our own representative, Courtney Niran, was front and center in mobilizing this in the, at the Capitol. Some other topics I want to cover, again, we will quickly touch upon some highlights today on what happens at Oregon Tech. Again, we are a technical university. We offer undergraduate and graduate degree programs. We have a couple of associate degrees, but we are primarily undergraduate along with graduate degree programs. And you can see about one third of our students are in Wilsonville. We serve regular university type students, about 700 of them. And then we are very active in high school dual credits. Almost 900 students are in the vicinity of Wilsonville, taking college credit. And as a matter of fact, I remember speaking in 17, 2017, I was giving a talk at the Rotary Club. One of the attendees stood up and said, "My daughter is taking 10 hours at Oregon Tech. She's earning 10 hours of college credit for $250." We kept it very low so that students can earn those credits and can really expedite their college journey, getting the degrees they can. We put in a strategic enrollment measure in place. In the second year I joined the university, our new freshmen have grown up, grown in Oregon Tech three successive years in a row, even through the pandemic. We did have some challenges this year when more of our students appear to be working and not attending any university because of the nature of the employment market. We are an applied learning, project-based learning university. When they attend one or two years, they have excellent skill sets to be able to attract gainful employment, which they are doing right now. Because we did check and they are not enrolled in other universities. But we have some very unique things to offer even in Wilsonville. I know there are many health professionals in the council. Our medical laboratory science is the state's only baccalaureate degree in that particular area. And we offer it in Wilsonville on our Portland Metro campus. Our emergency medical services program, it's an associate degree. We also have a baccalaureate. Again, both of these programs are in partnership with the OHSU. And the students earning degrees get their diplomas signed by both presidents and seals of both universities are on their diplomas. We also have renewable energy, business management, computer systems. Those are some of the areas where we have a critical mass at Wilsonville. And again, you can see the distribution of Oregon Tech. We have roughly about 5,000 students plus or minus a few hundred, depending on the year. And you can see our various campuses. Portland Metro is our urban campus in Wilsonville. We have online programs. We also teach Boeing engineers. We have been doing that for the last 20 years outside of that Everett plant. So we are the only Oregon university allowed to teach Washington students outside the Boeing plant, and we teach Boeing engineers there. I had referred to dual credit as well as the HST program, wherein high school students come to the university to take classes. Again, I talked about the project-based applied learning. And I'm just a couple of examples. This was Governor Brown recently tweeted. This is one of the students in Portland Metro. They are very passionate about their applied learning. It is Scott Morris who converted his '79 pickup to be completely electric. So that's the kind of education they get, really hands-on. And that's what the employer community recognizes. And here are several other student highlights with NASA winning state and national competitions, state competitions and so on, in the interest of time. I cannot go through in detail. The last one, I would say, when the pandemic started, some of our students used their 3D printing capabilities and started making protective shields for frontline medical workers that happened in Wilsonville. And the photo you see on that side is two of our students who won the statewide innovation competition. It's called Invent Oregon. And this is in the last three years, twice we have earned the grand prizes of first place. So our students are continuing to do very well. One of the important things we have been building over the last three, four years is the diversity, inclusion, and the cultural engagement part. This year, after campus conversations, we started a formal office in that area, the Office of Diversity, Inclusion, and Cultural Engagement. Dr. Jennifer Wilson joined us as the first permanent executive director of that center. And one of the key attributes our faculty have developed, it's called polytechnic cultural competency. We graduate technical professionals, both in engineering as well as in health professions. But we really wanted to talk about the other cultural competencies each graduate must have. So this is something we have begun to roll out. We have, we are creating emphasis through all of what we do in teaching and our interactions. So Dr. Wilson is really helping to build it all across Oregon Tech in partnership with our employers. Again, lots of metrics that talk about how well our graduates do. 96% of our graduates, whether employed or in graduate school within six months of their graduation, very often it is even before their graduation. They have multiple offers. They do extremely well. Every year, virtually, we ranked as number one in return on investment in Oregon. And the average, the average starting salary for our graduates is $60,000 per year. So our graduates do extremely well. And you see some of the other metrics that talk about the quality of our students and our graduates and how well our graduates do. And this is something that happened in, two years ago, we Georgetown University did their own independent study. And they looked at 4,500 universities and colleges all across the nation. And they were looking at how well, what is the return on investment for the students attending the university? Oregon Tech is ranked number one in Oregon. We are in the top 3% in terms of net present value in 10 years, 20 years, 30 years analysis. Again, we have some of the other rankings in Oregon there out of 4,500 universities and colleges. Again, here are the numbers I talked about how well Oregon Tech graduates earn upon graduation. And obviously, when families and students come to us, they are looking for a great career immediately upon graduation. I'm very proud to share our graduates do extremely well. This is all the more reason we don't want to be complacent. So last year, during the pandemic, unfortunately, we could not have too many in-person conversations. Nevertheless, in '19, we started this exercise. In 2020, we completed a new strategic plan based on four pillars of our commitments. One on student success, one on innovation, one is community engagement, the other one is institutional excellence. And you see our vision statement on board. We want to be the world-class polytechnic university that inspires students to become tomorrow's leaders. And we want to be the industry's university. We want to be truly connected. Again, this is not all in future tense. I'm going to give you some examples of what are already happening at Oregon Tech, including in Wilsonville. I strongly believe students should not be, just to be prepared for a career, they should be prepared for life. So what should we surround the student with? In addition to their excellent academic program, preparing for their career. So you can see the other aspects here, the commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion, entrepreneurship, and leadership. So we are beginning to create a whole host of programs. And many of them are voluntary programs. For example, in terms of fiscal literacy, we have created a program. I would love for every graduate not only be good in their major, whether it is health science or whether it is engineering, they should know what a balance sheet is, they should know what cash flow is. Both personally and professionally, they must have some rudimentary skills. Those are the things we are working on for our students now as part of the new strategic plan as well. Talk about faculty, this is one of our faculty members, Dr. Saber, in Wilsonville campus. He works very closely with the aerospace industry. In this case, he is working on rapid tooling with additive manufacturing. We are starting a new program-- We are starting a new program. We were successful getting about three and a half million dollars from the state in creating a state-of-the-art additive manufacturing program, both in Wilsonville and in Clamott Falls. Dr. Saber is our lead faculty member. We are doing statewide program expansion by our mission statement approved by Higher Education Coordination Commission. We have a statewide footprint. We are not a regional university. So I heard conversations relating to cybersecurity in the last presentation. The Oregon Cyber Defense Center is located in Wilsonville. We are now taking additional measures to expand that center. We have started a new program in data science, in healthcare. There are several programs, including a doctorate in physical therapy, which is Oregon Tech's first doctorate program. I talked to us being Industries University. This is our campus in Capus, which is the Oregon Manufacturing Innovation Center. We started it in two thousand eighteen with seven companies as partners. Today, we have forty industries that are members of this particular innovation center. Right now, the focus is in metal machining, and we would love to create complementary centers in Wilsonville by creating partnerships with you all and the community. And this is not just regional industries, it's national as well as international. This is a great example of what a polytechnic university can do, working closely with industries. We have also been successful in the last five years. We have been able to bring about hundred million dollars in capital projects to Clamott Falls. What you see at the bottom here is a photo of our new Center of Excellence in Engineering and Technology Building in Clamott Falls. It's forty-two million dollars project. We just started utilizing this building in January. There is going to be a ribbon cutting soon in June. And we have, we also are working on some other academic buildings, athletic facilities, and so on. So this has been a great economic development investment in Clamott Falls over the last four to five years. I want to kind of dwell for a minute on the opportunities and challenges in Wilsonville, which if time does not allow today, I would love to invite you to campus for a conversation on what we can do together. Even our strategic plan says Oregon Tech together. That was coined by a few students in Wilsonville when they came and addressed our board. They talked about that theme. I thought, what a great idea for it to be the title of our strategic plan. You know, first of all, we are offering preferred majors on industry proximity, and we would love to build on it both in Wilsonville and in the region so that we can be a portal and a magnet for attracting more industries and opportunities to Wilsonville. We do have a challenge in better access and awareness. I want to thank the council for your engagement and support in introducing some new signs for campus. It took us almost seven to eight years from, it started before my time. I'm very happy to share at last, we have signs on I-5 that say Oregon Tech. So persistence paid off. After seven years, we have those signs. But thanks to your help, we have been able to create additional signs. And because I'll say, met industries and employers when they came to Oregon, they really did not know what Oregon Tech was. They saw the sign driving on I-5. They did not know we are a public university accessible to the families of Wilsonville. We are a public university, a state university that is available to them. And I think with your help, we would love to create more awareness. You know, if you can include us in your materials in terms of Wilsonville being a home for a state public university, that will be great. Student dilemma, I talked about this year, employment opportunities versus continuing education. I think the pandemic has taught us new things. I don't think any longer we can tell the student body they have to pick one of the two while they are in certain phases of their life. We need to look at creative ways of creating that composite experience for students so that they can avail the employment opportunities, support families while they are continuing education. I think we need to think, higher education must change in order to respond to what is needed in the community. Capital projects and affordable housing. We would, one of the things like we repeatedly hear from students and the faculty and staff is housing challenges. I'm telling you nothing new that you don't already know of. This has been a tremendous challenge because our students cannot afford housing in Wilsonville. And anywhere else if they live, it is a long commute coming here. So housing is a big challenge, and our students, I've spoken with some of your staff, we would love to explore this topic further. And we would like to create additional capital projects here. And community engagement and ambassadorship. I think by us working together, I think it's a win-win partnership it can be. We have had interest in our building from other folks. You know, when everything was going on last year, they would like to acquire our building. But we feel we are part of this community. We would like to build more, and we would like to engage the community more and build Oregon Tech's profile and the footprint in Wilsonville, working with you. So again, I go back to the vision, and I, we want to be a student-centered, world-class polytechnic university. And we are, you know, that are executive, that is an executive think tank. I invited to come and guide us. Many industries are involved, and we would like to, we would like those leaders to be engaged in building our footprint and our contributions to Wilsonville. I would love for Oregon Tech and Wilsonville to be a destination of choice for distinctive professionals. With that, I would like to close my presentation today. I hope I did not exceed the time allocated, but I wanted to quickly introduce Oregon Tech. And again, I want to repeat my invite to the campus. We would love to host you on our campus in Wilsonville and tell you more about it and also help you meet some of our faculty, staff, and students. Thank you for your time today.
Well, thank you, Dr. Nagy. That was an incredible presentation. You gave us a richness of information in that short amount of time, and these slides will provide us some backup. I would, we will definitely follow up and maybe set up. I'm pretty sure a number of our counselors would like to come to your campus and learn more, and we'll follow up and set that up. How about we organize amongst ourselves and see how we can best do that? And housing, coordinating with industry, finding easier, new, innovative ways for people to, you know, be in different stages of their lives while also getting this education for these fantastic jobs in innovative ways. Those are some of the things I heard. They just sound really exciting, and it's always just a great point of pride to have such a highly regarded institution right here in Wilsonville.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? You can't let me off that easily today.
Well, if they don't, I don't, oh, I do see a hand. I thought that was.
Yes.
For Lindell, please.
Please.
Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you for your commitment to Wilsonville as well. I can, I can speak, I think, for the entire city that we are very fortunate to have Oregon Tech here. And I was a little concerned about a year ago or so when I heard that there was a possibility that maybe there was a buyer for the building. And yet I was hearing, I think we had some communication from some of the students about housing. And I think there are wonderful partnerships that I think that we can do together. We're also looking at doing some partnership with Clarkman's Community College. And so I think that there is, there's a synergy there that we can, we can work together along with our K-12 system to, and to expand our business and industry focus here. And I think Oregon Tech is a, is a key partner in that workforce development that we will do here. I know that in my work, I worked for a little while at Rogue Community College, and so we had great partnerships with Oregon Tech. And we also had winning students at Invent Oregon, too. So I know that program well, but thank you very much for coming, and I personally would look forward to a visit and more conversation.
Thank you, counselor. We look forward to that, too.
Well, thank you very much, Dr. Nagy. We will see you soon on the campus, and thank you also, Kelsey, for joining us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. So that will bring us to the Willamette Falls and Landing Heritage Area Coalition presentation with Ms. Mansfield.
Hello, thank you so much. I'm going to share my screen and then jump right in. Let's see. Yes, well, thank you so much, Mayor Fitzgerald, and the entire council for having me here tonight. As you mentioned, my name is Britta Mansfield, and I'm the executive director of the Willamette Falls and Landing Heritage Area Coalition. I'll try to keep my presentation short tonight, but I would just like to take a few moments to share briefly about the coalition's mission, speak a little bit about the benefits of heritage areas and the region's history, and then finally, share about some of the current work that we've been up to. So I'll dive right into our mission. Currently, our mission states that we are leading efforts to enhance, assist, and promote the heritage area. And our vision is to be a source of pride and prosperity where visitors and residents experience places, stories, and an abundance of culture and history. And what this means with the day operations is that we're dedicated to encouraging people, whether they're locals or tourists, to engage with their community and learn about its history. We recognize that we're not the keepers of history, but simply an organization dedicated to pointing people to the resources they need to learn more about the stories that make our region what it is. Currently, much of our focus is on uncovering and telling previously untold stories in order to give the most complete picture of the area's history. The histories that we tell are diverse, just like the region that we represent. The proposed national heritage area, which you see on the screen now, stretches along fifty-six river miles of the Willamette River. We include communities spanning from Eagle Creek all the way to Willamette Mission State Park just outside of Kaiser. And seeking national heritage area designation comes with some important benefits. Heritage areas provide sustainable economic development through job and business creation, community development, and tourism opportunities, and they support healthy environments and people by advocating for, by advocating for community involvement and recreational opportunities. Heritage areas also provide educational opportunities by, excuse me, educational opportunities by offering resources to current residents, tourists, and hopefully, future generations. So one thing to keep in mind about national heritage areas is that technically, we haven't received this designation from Congress. I think you may have seen on this slide before. It's a congressional designation that we have to receive. But just because we haven't received it doesn't mean the benefits that I just mentioned don't apply to us. We're keeping all of these benefits and goals in mind in all of the work that we're continuing to do. And in addition to seeking national heritage area, we're also working to maintain our state heritage area designation. This is a very similar designation to the national program, but it's actually administered through the state historic preservation office here in Oregon, and it offers a lot of those same benefits I just mentioned, but with the addition of some local support from the state. And then, aside from the economic and community-building benefits, you may be wondering why we're seeking this designation and doing the work that we do. So our primary reason for this is because we recognize that the areas surrounding the Willamette River have locally and nationally significant history that we want to ensure is preserved and shared. So let's look at some of that. I'll try to be brief because I think we're all fairly familiar with the region's history. But some of the earliest people groups that we share about are Native Americans. It's pretty hard to overstate their contributions to the region. Their histories are often intertwined with the developments of other communities, and they're still active participants that are contributing to the region today. We also like to share about the Hudson's Bay Company, since they were some of the earliest non-Native influences in the region, and that I'm sure we're all aware of the Oregon Trail and its significance here. It was a huge, this huge wave of westward migration that was certainly not perfect, but has definitely helped shape our nation's landscape. And in addition to the people groups I just mentioned, the river and the region itself kind of has its own history just because of how it develops. So the Missoula floods are something we always like to point people towards. And then there's also some technological advancements, such as the first long-distance transmission of electricity, which happened up in the Willamette Falls region. And then transportation was so essential to the Willamette River, and that's part of the story that Wilsonville holds. You have Boone Ferry Landing and Park right there that was a huge connector for the entire region, so we always like to highlight that. Wow, there's more history slides. So looking at all of that history, the coalition has some really big goals that includes largely telling all of those stories that I just mentioned. We have quite a few continuing projects that will help us do that and some newer initiatives that we've started within the last year that I'm going to share a little bit about. So some of our goals, including our national heritage area designation and the renovation of Westland Historic City Hall, are fairly long-term projects. But in the meantime, we have a handful of short-term efforts that are helping us stay engaged with our communities. So some of our recent internal work as a board has focused on rewilding our organization with regard to race, diversity, equity, and inclusion. We've recently worked with an outside consultant who led our board through a workshop and action planning process to ensure that we're best meeting the needs of our community. And we're currently in the midst of implementing that action plan and taking a serious look at how our messaging can fully reflect our commitment to telling the whole story of the region and how our internal policies can help us think more broadly. This RVEI work has really helped highlight that our job as a heritage-focused organization can't be properly executed without looking at multiple sides and perspectives of any situation. And then additionally, some really, really short-term work is coming up in the next few weeks. We will be launching two new virtual tours of the entire heritage area. These are self-guided tours. You can access either through an app or through our website, and they'll enable both visitors, locals, and anybody who can't get out and physically be in the heritage area to still engage with its history. Those will be really exciting, and I think a resource that will grow with our organization. And then in May, we'll be launching a fifty-year business awards program to honor businesses throughout the region that have been operational for fifty years or more. Our priority this time around with this event, this happens about every five years for our organization, and our priority this time around is really to get people out and supporting these businesses. So we'll be launching some significant marketing efforts in May to help people really get out and support local economies. And then, one final update about our current work is that this past winter, the coalition received a very generous donation, actually of a business known as Old Oregon's Photos. One of, well, the business owner himself was the spouse of one of our board members and sadly passed away this last fall. But he had worked to digitally restore thousands, I'm not kidding, thousands of historic photos that were related to the Oregon Territory, and he sold custom prints of these images. It was an extremely valuable historic resource that gave people access to a piece of history that they could really put their hands on and engage with in a really unique way. But he donated that entire enterprise to the coalition, and we have been working for the past few months with a small group of volunteers to get the business back up and running, and we will formally be launching it as part of the coalition coming up in April. So we're really excited to share that with everybody. We're going to have an open house and have the website back open, which will be fantastic. So the last thing I'd like to say is that none of the work I've described tonight could take place without our partners. I sincerely like to thank the city of Wilsonville for your contribution to our organization. We have board members from your region, including Counselor Lehan and Greg Leo, who helps set direction and offer essential guidance to our organization. And then we're also very grateful for the financial contribution that we've received from you. You guys are up to date with your 2021, 2022 contribution to our organization, and we do hope that we can count on you for the same support in the next fiscal year as you guys start to plan for your budget cycle. That concludes my presentation for the evening, but I'm happy to stay for a few moments and answer any questions.
You're muted, mayor, but I'll just go ahead and talk. Please do. I just wanted to add, here, not a question for Britta, but... I just wanted to add, here, not a question for Britta, but to add that one of the exciting things about Wilson, what Wilsonville's doing in the upcoming year or two is the work at Boones Ferry Landing. So as we do the archeologic study there and, and then work to restore that along with Boones Ferry Park, that's, that's just a critical part, as you saw with the map. We are about halfway in the middle between the falls and the Wheatland Ferry. So, so if we can be that, a stopping point for canoes and kayaks, for instance, and, and tell the story of Boones Ferry and Boones Ferry Road, we become really a central piece of, of the, of the whole heritage area. So very important. And the other piece is that we're looking at, as well as others, is the acquisition of the Lady Bee, which is a boat that is being given away for free. And a number of organizations are looking at it and where would be the best place for it to have a home. It's currently in Wilsonville, down at Wilsonville Concrete, and, and we've expressed some interest in having it in one of our parks. And also, but also, Willamette Falls and Landings has been looking at putting it in Westland. Would they like to have it? There are a bunch of questions regarding the eventual location of the Lady Bee, but, but this is a tou- a historic tugboat that if one of us doesn't take it, it will go for scrap. So, so we, we just want to make, I, I think we should make sure that, that we let people know that we are in the mix of interested parties. We, we just need to find the best home for it. So that was all I had to add. I didn't have any other questions, so.
Well, thank you. I look forward to seeing these photographs. That sounds like an excellent resource that would, you know, take some time to get out into, you know, how they're going to be deployed, but obviously, the city of Wilsonville is very interested in this, and congratulations to the commission for finding you as their executive director. Great opportunity.
Thank you very much.
Is there anything that we can do for you or other things that you would want from the city council or the city?
Well, that's a fantastic question. You know, I think the, the biggest thing is financial support. We want to make sure that does make it into your budget conversations. And then just sharing, sharing your history with your community, that's a huge thing. And I think Counselor Lehan just mentioned some great history that we are working to share, some great sites. Those will be featured at least Boones Ferry Landing. The Korean War Memorial that is in Wilsonville is also going to be featured on our heritage trail, and hopefully, we'll find some businesses from your community that are 50 years or older, although we're not certain about that one, but we are looking very hard. So anything that we can do to, to drive people to your region and let them know what a wonderful community Wilsonville is and that it does have this rich heritage that, that should be told and experienced, just to keep us informed about what's happening in the community, which your board members do a great job of doing. So I think keeping up the, keeping up the relationship as it's been going has, will be wonderful for both of us.
All right. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
So that brings us to the Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports, and Meeting Announcements, starting with Council President Oferwal.
Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. I did it again. I skipped, I, I need, I guess I need several more years' practice with this. This is the section where, for citizen input and community announcements, and I'm going to read this. "This is an opportunity for visitors to address the city council on items not on the agenda. It is also the time to address items that are on the agenda but are not scheduled for a public hearing. Staff and city council make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input before tonight's meeting ends or as quickly as possible thereafter. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Use the raise hand feature of Zoom to let us know if you would like to provide comments." Is there anyone waiting to, um, visit with us?
Yes, Mayor, we have Kevin Mansfield, who I believe would like to discuss Parkinson, Parkinson's Awareness Month, I believe, is the topic, yes. Okay.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Yep.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't see myself on video, so I'm not sure if I'm on video or not. Anyway, are we?
I don't see the video yet.
I don't see a thing. Britta always says the mute. Is it on the lower left?
No.
No? Oh, heavens, mute. Anyway, I can go on. I'm sorry.
All right.
Kevin, feel free to share your comments via audio.
Hey, I don't see how I can get to audio.
You, you, you're on audio now.
Oh, okay. I'm, okay, I'm sorry. So I'll just go ahead then. Excuse me if I might get a, a, a loss of train of thought. I have Parkinson's for the last 20 years, and I wanted to thank Mayor Fitzgerald and city council members for accepting the April as Parkinson's Awareness Month. It means a lot to me. It means a lot to the people in, at Parkinson's in the city of, of, of Wilsonville. Right now, they're, they're closed because of the pandemics. We're just doing, they don't have any, um, uh, but speech, uh, availabilities, but once that opens up if any of you would like to visit their meeting, please let me know. A little bit about me and Parkinson's. I was diagnosed with it in 2001, and it put me out of the workforce. And when I went to my neurologist, all that she told me was that you have Parkinson's. Come back and see me in, in six months. Not knowing anything about it, I went online, and it was the wrong thing to do because all it told me was about the advanced stages of Parkinson's. And it put me in a very depressed and, and bad feelings. I continued to do my studies, and I found Parkinson's resources of Oregon, and they talked to me and told me that it was so progression disease. And I, I've been with them as a facilitator for, for 20 years. They asked me if I wanted to be on a support group meeting, and at that time, there was a waiting list, and I had to wait for a couple of months before we got on that. The first couple of meetings, we had 45 people in a small office. It lasted a couple of months, then we decided to split off. For the last eight years, we had a, a meeting, an assembly that we always have once a year. We had a representative there from Michael J. Fox Foundation. I was very impressed with what they had to say and what they do. So I have been public policy advocate for the last eight years with them. I talked to our state senators and our representatives about, um, laws and stuff that are going to go into effect or that would affect people with Parkinson's as well as other degenerative diseases. Yesterday, I had the privilege of talking with Senator Jeff Merkley. And, um, when I started with Parkinson's, there was maybe 14 support groups in the Portland, Southwest Washington area, and now today, 20 years later, we have 60-plus. This is a very growing disease. It used to be only known with people in their 60s, 70s, or 80s. Nowadays, there's people in their 30s. I've met a couple of people in their 20s. So it really doesn't matter the age anymore, and it's progressing severely. Unfortunately, there's no cure for it, but we're trying the best that we can through the Fox Foundation and other organizations, such as, like, just you. I want to thank you guys for doing that for us. Again, it means a lot. And thank you for inviting me to your meeting today. I enjoyed your first presentation. I thought it was, was great. And got any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Well, thank you, Kevin. Really appreciate you taking the time to come to our council and talk about this. I think that, as you probably know, our council is a group of people who are concerned about helping people have opportunities for all the access they need for the best quality of life. So we want to keep looking for that and are glad to hear about what you've done with these support groups. I will follow up by sending you my email so that you, we can be in touch, and we will announce Parkinson's Awareness Month in April as well.
Great. Thank you very much. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have in the future and stuff. So, with that, allegiance and good night.
All right. Have a great evening. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Now we will go to Council, Counselor Comments, Liaison Reports, and Meeting Announcements, starting with Council President Oferwal.
Since our last council meeting, I attended the, the Wilsonville Town Hall with our state rep, Neura, Courtney Neura, and appreciated learning more from her and look forward to the message that I understand we'll receive at our next council meeting on some of the business conducted recently. I also attended the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting last Monday, and also the Clackamas County Child Care Task Force meeting that evening. And coming up, I believe yesterday was the start of spring, and today is the, many of our Wilsonville schools are in spring break this week. I hope that our students and families that are able to celebrate or do fun activities during spring break. I know our library has some activities in Parks and Rec. Also, it has a great, fun, and safe week. To note, a couple additional spring activities that are coming up very soon. April 7th, I believe, is the Community Garden Reservation for New Gardeners, begins on April 7th, so good to get plans going with that. And also, our Parks and Rec Department is going to be celebrating and having many activities all week long for Sakura Week on April 4th through 10th. So that will be a fun thing for our Wilsonville community to experience as well, and I believe there's, there's probably some tie-ins to our Kitsikata Sisters City Committee with that, with those activities as well. So fun things to celebrate coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lehan.
Most of the things I've been involved with this, since the last meeting are, were airport-related meetings and various Zooms, as well as Willamette Falls and Landings. I'm on a couple of their committees. But the, the one thing I wanted to mention that, that isn't on the official calendar or wasn't on there was I met with Carrie Rappold at Park, at Mary Field Park to, with, with him and several people from Parks Department to go over the issues in the natural area there, which is about a nine-acre natural area, and it has a variety of issues, mostly that have to do with invasives that include blackberry, holly, English ivy, hawthorn, et cetera. And really came up with, I think, a good plan, and they, they got busy on it the very next day. There was the county crew out there because it, it's sort of twofold. They describe it as fighting nature with nature. And so we want to try to remove some of the noxious invasives and, and then get them replaced with good natives or release the natives that we have, which was the priority, the first priority was to release the medrone and oak trees that are, were being strangled by these other plants that we would like to not have there. So, so anyway, a plan. It'll probably be a multiple-year plan to try to affect some change in that area, but, but it, it's an excellent approach and very responsive on the part of natural resources and parks. So that was my response.
All right. Thank you. Counselor West.
Wish all the kiddos a happy spring break, and I don't have much to report beyond the, we spent a significant amount of time as a council interviewing and working to hire our next city attorney, so that took up a lot of time for all of us, and so we're moving forward with that. And yeah, wish you a very happy safe spring break.
Thank you. Counselor Linville.
Thank you, Your Honor. So on March 16th, I attended the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee Metro Subcommittee, and the major topic of discussion for that meeting was the proposed amendments to the regional transportation plan. And we've talked about this and, and I've provided a, a document to the council about what the issues, but I just wanted to do an update and let the council know that the committee, the C4, that the amendments have been approved by the bodies that need to approve them to have the regional transportation plan updated. And just, just again, to reiterate that the, that the city shares the concerns of the other Portland regional partners regarding delaying tolling until the Regional Mobility Pricing Project is completed and an integrated region-wide tolling program can be implemented. The city has consistently had a position on a tolling issue that if tolling is to occur, then local traffic mitigation funding, substantial transit improvements, and issues of mobility equity must be adequately addressed. And it appears that the proposed amendments meet that goal, and so we're hopeful that the language was, was strengthened, and so we're hopeful that ODOT will, in fact, address the concerns that not only the city of Wilsonville has, but the region. I wanted to say congratulations to our city attorney on her, on the occasion of her retirement, and thank her personally for all of the work and the consistently professional advice and assistance that she has provided to the city council. So Barbara, I wish you the very, very best, and safe travels and wonderful time in your retirement.
Thank you.
And then I, I just wanted to mention that the, the Wilsonville Metro Community Enhancement Committee is going to meet on the 29th and 30th of this month, and we will begin looking at new projects to fund with those, with those monies. And Counselor West serves on that committee as well. And then we are doing, just are, trying to find a date for the Willamette Falls Locks Commission to have a final day to transfer the locks to the new, uh, organization that Counselor Lehan will be serving on. And so we're optimistic about that happening pretty soon and moving forward with, with the, getting the locks opened and our river reconnected. And that is my, those are my comments.
Thank you, everyone. That brings us to the consent agenda, and I would like to ask our city attorney to please read the resolution by title.
Resolution number 2959. A resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement contract with Cummings Management Group for an owner's representative and construction management services for the Public Works Comp. Complex project. Resolution number 2966, a resolution of the city of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager or his designee to appoint an audit firm. And finally, minutes of the March 7, 2022 city council meeting.
Thank you, Joy.
Your Honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a second.
All second, Your Honor.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to the city manager report.
Yeah, I just have one item tonight, Your Honor, and I, I, a couple of weeks ago, I think it was, or was it last week, we, we took Ms. Jacobson out to lunch as an executive team, and she was not wanting any long speeches. So, I'm going to try to honor her 10-plus years here with the city by just saying a few words. I hope she will indulge me here. We came in about the same time. And depending on the size of the city, city attorneys wear different hats, they have different staff levels and budgets. But just to get a flavor for what Barbara has done over the last 10 years, and I'm sure I won't capture all of it, but I, I do want to make note that she was the city's chief litigator, she was a department head, she still isn't till March 31st, all these things. She was your parliamentarian, general counsel to the city council, quasi-judicial and legislative land use advisor to the Development Review Board, Planning Commission, and city council. She's a valued member of the executive team. She was an internal service department to all departments on anything related to legal matters, chief drafter of ordinance and resolutions, and chief cook and bottle washer. I mean, that's just the general nature of how it works in smaller local government. So as I was contemplating what makes a good city attorney, I've had the pleasure of working many, and they have different skill sets. I, I would say, in local government, it's not just the litigation success rate. Oftentimes, it's the litigation that you avoid through successful negotiations. And if I could pay Barbara one compliment from my heart, because I've worked with a lot of attorneys, I've never, I've never seen a better negotiator for a city. And I, I think that is the one area, that skill set is so important. Like I said, it's not about wins and losses. It's oftentimes the amount of litigation that you avoid because you can sit down in a room and, and hammer things out. And she's been involved in a lot of big projects. But the one that I really wanted to compliment her on, and the one that really is going to set the city up for success long-term, is the work she did on the Big Pipe. And there were others, but I'm specifically picking this one out because I think it speaks to her skills in that, in that area. That was a, and I'm being politically correct and kind here when I say that was a long, arduous process. I, I could use other adjectives, but it was a very drawn-out process. It was very difficult. It involved multiple entities. And at no time did I ever not feel secure that Barbara was our chief negotiator. That process began with Mike Kohoff as our city attorney, and we worked out a term sheet on that, but the real hard work of that was getting people to yes. And it wasn't easy, and it required a lot of depth skill beyond city attorney skills. I, I just wanted to say, Barbara, that was an incredible piece of work, and I was so happy. And I guess I will just close by saying, because I know attorneys love double negatives, I was never not happy you were on my side of the table. Thank you for 10 great years of service.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Brian. That was very well said. Well, Barbara, do you have any legal business?
I actually do. I'm a little choked up now, but I'm, I'm over it. And it has to do with the Big Pipe Project. Ironically, just last week, TBWD contacted me along with the Willamette Water Supply. The good news is, if you haven't been down by the water treatment plant, they've pretty much finished all of their work down there. They've made a great new overlook. But one of the things that we had to kind of leave open in all of those various documents that go along with this project was exact legal descriptions as to where the pipe would go and where the other facilities related to the project would go, because of course, we want those well-marked and surveyed. They're big honking structures under our ground, and we want to know where they are so that when we do projects in the future, we don't run into unexpected difficulties. So, we met and kind of walked through what's already been done at the water treatment site and the park down there. And a little bit to my surprise, TBWD said, you know, it kind of, we've been, we were 50, 51% owner of the land that sits underneath and around the water treatment plant, and we have been for years. But they really, now that they're building their own new plant not very far down the road, and they were going to have a lot of challenges with that and have had a lot of challenges with that, it's become very expensive, but they're pulling through. They kind of would just like to have a little bit less to manage. And so I was surprised when they brought up, because it's, it will be a good deal for the city, I think, just dividing out, partitioning out that property so that they will basically deed over to us the majority of the property up there, keep an area where they have some facilities right now, and then of course, they'll have easements under our property. They brought several maps, and I would have liked to have gone over them tonight, but time just didn't allow, and we're still a little bit early in the process. So they're talking with their boards this week as well. But I just wanted to let you kind of have a feel that we're going to be looking at for your, of course, review and approval, partitioning up that, partitioning out that property up there. We will, of course, retain, we'll both retain ownership of the plant for right now, but the ground underneath the plant will go to the city if we follow the plan that we were talking about, as well as the park area and some of the upper, upper site as well. So, more to come on that. Just want to let you know that, that will, and that will be one of the last steps for court towards closing out that project in the city. Of course, it's still going on in the roadways, and so there will be additional easement work that we need to do there. But the good news is, almost everything is, is done at the plant site. So, wanted to talk about that a little bit earlier. We were pressed for time, but it's nothing, nothing confidential about it, and we'll be, I'll be bringing back more of that later. Well, maybe I won't, but somebody will be.
That is pretty amazing.
Yeah, I think it's amazing, too.
Mayor, I neglected to mention, and I believe you all received an invite, but for anybody who's watching that wants to wish Barbara farewell on her no more night meetings tour, we have scheduled in the Willamette River complex up here at City Hall, March 30th, from 3:00 to 5:00 in. It's a casual drop-in affair. So hopefully, you can all make that and, and wish Barbara well. That is the day before her official retirement, so I'm sure she would appreciate it, and I'm sure staff would like to see you as well.
And I hear there's cake.
Wonderful. Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, there's cake. So if you need another inducement, we do have cake and punch, so.
Okay, Barbara, we will see you there.
Oh, appreciate it. I would love to see you guys. Anyway.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's legal business.
Thank you, Barbara.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. On that note, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Good night.
Goodbye.